Okay, good evening. At this time, we're going to call to order the public hearing of Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Monday, March the first, two thousand twenty-one, at five thirty P. M. At Franklin County Justice Center in Carnesville, Georgia. Welcome everyone and thank you for coming this afternoon. The purpose of this afternoon's public hearing is to receive public comments for or against proposed zoning applications that will be considered for action by the board at tonight's regular board meeting following this hearing. No action will be taken at this hearing. All parties are welcome to remain after the public hearing for the regular meeting itself. We have three items on the agenda for this hearing. After introducing each item, we'll ask the applicant, if they're present, to come and speak on behalf of their request. After the applicant has spoken, anyone can come forward and speak for or against each of the items. The first item on the agenda is an application by Mark Lydon of two one one eight Vestridge Court, Vestavia, Alabama, for a conditional use permit to build a two hundred sixty-five foot wireless communications tower on a forty-one point eight acre tract of land located on Highway three ten and identified as tax parcel zero zero nine dash zero seven zero. Is Mr. Lydon here tonight?
Yes.
Would you come up, Mr. Lydon?
All righty. Again, named Mark Lydon and appreciate you all taking the time to consider this application. It's really simple. Two hundred sixty-five foot self-support tower, the acre by Verizon Wireless. Think you've been distributed some propagation maps there. And that's really the crux of the deal. Page seven and eight is like a before coverage and then eight is after coverage. And that's why we want to build this tower, or Verizon does, is they want to improve the coverage in Franklin County along three twenty, not only for people driving, but for people living here. So that's how simple that is. I don't know if you all have any questions or not. I'd be glad to answer them.
Commissioners, do you have questions for Mr. Lydon? Would this tower be able to, would it be open to other carriers too, or just, okay? Do you anticipate any coming on?
Not right now. This is strictly for Verizon, that's who I work with.
Would it be powered by fiber? Or, I mean, okay. Is it the LTE or would it be able to be expanded eventually to 5G?
It's LTE right now, but 5G is mainly smaller cell. This is what we call a macro cell. And 5G is kind of like micro cell, like power poles along the highway.
Okay.
They'll go two to four hundred feet. This will go two to four miles.
Oh, okay. Other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lydon. At this time, is there anyone present tonight who would like to speak in favor of this application? If you would, when you come up to the podium, please, before you begin, give the clerk your name and address. So would anyone like to come up and speak in favor of this application? Would anyone, anyone here who wants to come up and speak against it? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. The second item on the agenda is an application by Wendy Doyle of seven two one zero Palisades Point, Swanee, Georgia, for a conditional use permit to build a two hundred sixty-five foot wireless communications tower on a forty-seven point two seven acre tract of land located on Highway one ninety-eight and identified as tax parcel zero one zero dash zero five nine. Is Ms. Doyle present? Ms. Doyle, would you come up?
Good evening, Board. Thank you for allowing us to come and present to you this evening. I'm also with Verizon Wireless and my company works with Mark as well. So right now Verizon is trying to actually develop more coverage in Franklin County as a whole. I know that you offered an application a couple of months ago. This is just an ongoing effort to connect the dots with other towers in the county. If you'll take a look at this just really quick, I think, just like, like Mark had mentioned, it's pretty, pretty public plan of work. If you want to take a look, this is for Ross Bellamy, our landlord, and he is with us this evening to show support. And he is proposing to put a two hundred and sixty-five foot tower, the same height as the tower that you just heard, to also provide macro cellular capacity and coverage issues. If you'll take a look, if you don't mind, on page ten and eleven, this will kind of sum it up real easy for you here. On page, oh, page ten, if you'll take a look at the circle area, you can see that this is the area that Verizon is trying to cover. I'll show you the paper looking up here, just in case you need to find it. The dark circle right here is the actual coverage area. And if you'll take a look, you'll see that it's mostly red, a little bit of yellow. But the red represents the area of need where there's not a lot of coverage or capacity at all in this area along one ninety-eight. And this site is actually across the area of two churches and the fire station that's out there. So we're really hoping to connect the coverage along one ninety-eight. Now, if you'll look to the next page on page eleven, you'll see that if we do develop this site, you'll see how that coverage greatly increases as it turns to green. And what we're actually trying to do with this cell site is offload the coverage. If you'll just take a look here, from this site right here, it's very, very busy and that's trying to keep the calls going to the next cell site, that there's a gap in this coverage. And that's why we're proposing to put the tower where you're locating it there off of Mr. Bellamy's property. So I don't know if you've had any questions particularly about this tower, but if you do, I'd be happy to address those questions at this time.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have questions?
It will be fiber. I think that was a question before. And it will also be, you know, Verizon hoping that once they get enough capacity and coverage in the area that it will go to 5G sometime.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Doyle. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak against this application? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. The third item on the agenda is an application by Todd Kahler of one oh nine Terra Drive, Easley, South Carolina, to rezone a five point oh two acre tract of land on two fifty-two Complex Drive, Carnesville, from agriculture-intensive to commercial-industrial. The property is identified as tax parcel zero two eight dash zero seven eight. Is Mr. Kahler present? Am I pronouncing your name right?
Kahler, yes.
Okay.
The property is what used to be known as the kids or the youth camp over, that's the go-kart track now. The building that we, that is on the five acres that we were wanting to rezone includes the thirty thousand square foot building that's basically been not used since, I believe, the eighties. Our point is to, or we're bringing, we'd like to bring in a pallet company that rebuilds and repurposes pallets for several of the local companies around the area.
Okay. Do you have a company, I mean, is there another company that does that right now? Is this an expansion?
Yeah.
Where is that located?
Well, Dustin is our partner that has the pallet company. He's got one in Commerce and he's got one in.
State.
State in Georgia.
State, okay.
This is an expansion of that company.
Commissioners, do you have questions for Mr. Kahler? All right, well, I appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anyone at this time who would like to come up and speak in favor of this application? Did you want to come?
We have two different locations, one in Commerce, one in State.
Tell, if you will, give the clerk your name and address. Okay.
Done this since I was seven. Grew up in two thousand twelve. I started on my own, doing, my grandpa sold his out. So we established off the farm in two thousand thirteen Commerce. We've been there at current and just looking spanned. I think Pilgrim's Pride is actually a single, looks like it's coming maybe possibly into the county. We already facilitate pallets to a lot of the other three places. Just wanted to simply expand.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of his application? Is there anyone here who would wish to speak against the application? Okay. Is there any other person here who would like to speak for or against any of the applications we've heard tonight? We traditionally keep this hearing open until a few minutes before six, before our regular board meeting. So we'll do that tonight in case anyone else comes in who would like to speak to us. Otherwise, we'll just informally be in recess until that time. All right, thank you. At this time, is there any other person here who would like to speak either for or against any of the planning and zoning items? Okay, if there are no more public comments, then without objection, we're going to adjourn the public hearing. And we've got about two more minutes, we'll start the regular board meeting. So at this time, the public hearing is adjourned. All right, good evening. At this time, we're going to call to order the regular board meeting of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Monday, March the first, two thousand twenty-one, at six o'clock P. M. At the Franklin County Justice Center in Carnesville, Georgia. We just note for the record that we have a quorum consisting of all the commissioners who are present for tonight's meeting. We want to welcome everyone and thank you for coming tonight. Tonight, we also want to welcome our new county manager, Mr. Derek Turner. This is his first day, so as of today, he's our new county manager. So on behalf of the board, we want to welcome you. At this time, Commissioner Foster is going to give an invocation and we'd ask that you remain standing for the pledge afterwards. So please stand.
Gentlemen, thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for letting us gather here and, Lord, please let us help to make the best decisions for our county tonight, Board and your Reverend. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, we need to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting as presented?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Thank you. Commissioner Wester has made a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foster has seconded the motion. All in favor of approving tonight's agenda as presented signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero and tonight's agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is the personnel report. Mr. Turner, Mr. Harris, do you have any personnel changes to let us know about?
None tonight.
Okay, so none tonight. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the prior meeting minutes, and this will be for February the first, two thousand twenty-one. That's a regular board meeting. February the ninth, two thousand twenty-one, special call meeting. And February the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, work session. All the commissioners have been provided with a copy of the draft minutes for these prior minutes. Commissioners, do you know of any corrections that need to be made? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes as presented?
I'll make the motion that we approve the prior meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foster has made a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes. Is there a second to his motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Franklin has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the prior meeting minutes of February the first, two thousand twenty-one, regular meeting, February the ninth, two thousand twenty-one, special call meeting, and February the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, work session as presented signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero and the prior meeting minutes are approved. At this time, we're going to open the meeting up for public comment. During this portion of the meeting, any member of the public can speak on any topic of concern that they would like to address to the board. This is primarily a comment section and not a question and answer section mainly because the questions and issues that are brought to the board in this manner may be complex and since we don't know about them ahead of time, we haven't had time to prepare or research. If you have questions that we can't answer tonight, we'll ask you to write those down, give those to the clerk with your contact information, and then someone would contact you in a few days and try to answer your concerns in more detail. When you come up to the podium, please begin by giving the clerk your name and your address. And in order to facilitate the meeting and allow everyone the opportunity to speak, we do limit the comments to five minutes or less. And I'll try to warn you if you have, just when you have about one minute remaining. So at this time, is there anyone who would like to come up to the podium and address the board? Any public comments? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item. The next item on the agenda is the application by Mark Lydon for a conditional use permit to build a two hundred sixty-five foot wireless communications tower on Highway three ten. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Scott Delosier, our planning director, to tell us more about this.
Yeah, good evening, gentlemen. So Mr. Lydon has been before the planning commission already. The tower is, as you heard earlier, is filling in some gaps in their coverage in Franklin County. Verizon Wireless is currently investing quite, quite a bit of money into Franklin County right now. As we look at the application, it meets all requirements and guidelines for Franklin County and the planning commission's recommendation was to approve this application as presented.
Commissioners, do any of you have questions for Mr. Delosier? Okay, thank you. This time, is there a motion to take action on the conditional use permit application by Mark Lydon?
I'll make the motion that we approve this conditional land use permit application for Mr. Lydon, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wester. Commissioner Wester has made the motion to approve the conditional use permit. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Swales has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing no more, all those in favor of the motion to approve the conditional use permit by Mr. Lydon signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero and the conditional use permit for Mr. Lydon is approved. The next item on the agenda is an application by Wendy Doyle for a conditional use permit to build a two hundred sixty-five foot wireless communications tower on Highway one ninety-eight. So at this time, Mr. Delosier, if you'd tell us about that.
Right, so again, this is the same, same story as the last one, is, you know, that they're wanting to fill in a lot of gaps and covers that we had in Franklin County. I think there was in January, there was another one that y'all approved, so they're just, they're, they've seen, they've designated Franklin County as a growing and emerging market. And so they're going to continue to probably invest some more in the county here in the future is my, is my anticipation. But the planning commission did review this. It does meet all guidelines and regulations for Franklin County and they did, the planning commission did recommend to approve as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delosier. Again, any other questions? Okay, at this time, is there a motion to take action on the conditional use permit application by Mrs. Doyle?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application by Mrs. Doyle of Verizon Wireless.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foster has made the motion to approve the conditional use permit. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Franklin has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no more, all those in favor of the motion to approve the conditional use permit by Mrs. Doyle signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero and the conditional use permit for Mrs. Doyle is approved. The next item on the agenda is an application by Todd Kahler to rezone a five point zero two acre tract of land on two fifty-two Complex Drive, Carnesville, from agricultural-intensive to commercial-industrial. Mr. Delosier, could you tell us about that?
Yeah, so Mr. Kahler, he has a business partner with him who is present tonight there wanting to rezone. It's the tract of land that joins the Georgia Carding Complex off of Complex Road, which is off of Old Stagecoach. This has been an empty thirty-five hundred plus square foot warehouse for the last probably twenty years. They're wanting to put a good use to it. They're wanting to turn it into a pallet manufacturing slash reconstruction, they'll take old broken pallets and make new ones out of it. This tract of land, you know, along with some others that are, you know, part of the county, agriculture-intensive probably was not the best zoning for this, you know, when the zoning took back in oh five. Commercial-industrial does fit where it's at, it does fit in the, in the comprehensive plan for Franklin County. And it does, it is the appropriate zoning for the intended use of property. The planning commission did recommend approving with conditions. Complex Drive, which is the gravel drive that comes off of Old Stagecoach, it is a privately maintained road. And with, with it being a pallet manufacturing plant, it has got a very high fire load rating. And if they were, if it were to catch fire, it would probably melt that building in a hurry. So they wanted to add the condition in writing that they are to maintain Complex Drive in a manner that is appropriate to ensure all merchant vehicles can access the building at all times, since it is a privately maintained road. And then also additionally, that the building has an engineered fire protection plan and fire suppression system that is properly installed, permitted, and inspected to ensure the safety of the, of the personnel that will be working there and of the property around it.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have questions?
Were they, were the agreeable tall loads?
Yes, they were.
Any others? What, under the first condition, when it says maintained as appropriate, does that have to do, I mean, is there a certain width or the surface gravel or?
Well, you know, it's got, it's got on the site plan, you'll see it's a thirty foot wide, you know, east and all the way back to it. So it's got to be maintained at least thirty foot wide all the way.
Okay, Mr. Kahler, you understand that? Or, is Mr. Kahler? Okay, all right.
Well, they, they do a good job maintaining anyway. They have a lot of traffic getting out there with the, with the go-kart races and stuff. But we just wanted to make sure we had something.
So does the go-kart, does that share that drive?
It does share the drive.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Delosier. At this time, is there a motion to take action on rezoning, this rezoning request by Mr. Kahler to rezone the five point oh two acres at two fifty-two Complex Drive from A.I. to C.I., ag-intensive to commercial-industrial?
Make a motion that we go ahead and change the zoning from A.I. to C.I. for this tract of land.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Swales has made the motion to rezone from A.I. to C.I., two fifty-two Complex Drive. Is there a second to the motion?
I'm sorry? With the conditions? With the conditions presented that the applicant have a fire system in place that is regularly maintained and inspected.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the rezone request for two fifty-two Complex Drive from A.I. to C.I. with conditions attached by planning and zoning. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Wester has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the request, request to rezone five point oh two acres at two fifty-two Complex Drive from A.I. to C.I. with the conditions recommended by planning and zoning attached to the approval signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion will carry four to zero and the rezone request is approved. All right, the next item on the agenda is a review of the bids for the twenty twenty-one L-MIG resurfacing project. So I'm going to ask Mr. Harris and the county manager to present that for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. September eleventh, we opened bids, sealed bids for the L-MIG project for twenty twenty-one. The roads in that project are Jacksonville Road from Highway one forty-five to First Bridge, Parktown Road from the city limits to the Hart County line, Hill Shore Court, Park Street, Blue Ridge Place, Diamond Lane from Salem Road to Bond Bridge Road, Blue Water Place, and Ross Place. We had eight bids. Stratton and Sons come in at the lowest bid, seven hundred forty-one thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars. We received five hundred forty-three thousand nine fifty-five and ninety-four cents from the twenty twenty-one L-MIG project from Georgia DOT. And we are going to supplement that to Splos residence and make up the difference. So tonight, I recommend that we award each contract, L-MIG twenty twenty-one contract to Stratton and Sons.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris. Commissioners, do you have any questions about this recommendation? Any questions? Okay, at this time, is there a motion to award the bid for the twenty twenty-one L-MIG asphalt resurfacing project?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we award this bid to Stratton and Sons for seven hundred forty-one thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has made the motion to award the bid to Stratton and Sons for the bid amount. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foster has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to award the bid for the twenty twenty-one L-MIG asphalt resurfacing project to Stratton and Sons Construction Incorporated in the amount of seven hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-seven cents signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. Motion will carry four to zero and Stratton and Sons is awarded a project. All right, the next item on the agenda is roadway spraying and this is something we talked about at the work session last week, and it was a proposal to contract with DBI Services to spray the roadside with herbicide. So I'm going to ask Mr. Harris to review this one more time for us.
Yes, Ken Engineer John Phillips presented a proposal to contract that spraying. And we received bids from DBI Services for all paved roads, and this is two applications, spring and summer. The cost is forty-one six twenty-five per application for a total cost of eighty-three thousand two hundred best paved roads. Gravel roads were quoted at thirty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. After discussion, we decided to do the gravel roads for the, we figured, we typically budget about eighteen thousand dollars for the purchase of our own herbicide. And after looking at the figures, it cost us about thirty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars to do one spraying in-house. So using this method, I know there was a question last Thursday about if it killed the grass, it makes it dormant. It looks like it's dead, but it does, it puts it, and I think that the Johnson Grass side of it is an additional spray indication that they charge an extra fee for certain roads. I think Nick told me we only have about four roads that we have a problem with that.
So is that going to be included in this or is that something we'll?
If we want to do that, it is an additional cost.
Okay.
But tonight, I ask you to approve the, the contract spraying with DBI Services for eighty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. We have received, we received about eighty thousand dollars from Jima, from our recent cleanup from the hurricane during the, for this year. After doing this process for a couple of years, we anticipate it's going to cut out one complete bush hogging session for the, my recommendation is to approve the contract with DBI Services for eighty-two dollars.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris. Commissioners, do you have questions for Mr. Harris? The funds from Jima, is that money that we've already received or we're still waiting?
It is not. Is that, we're there in the process of, from the federal declaration, getting all the paperwork completed to receive those funds.
When, when do you think we would, I mean, do you have an idea?
I think we'll receive.
Okay, but we, we anticipate that's what we'll?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right, at this time, is there a motion to approve the proposal to contract with DBI in the amount of eighty-three thousand two hundred fifty dollars for two applications of herbicide to the, and it's paved road shoulders, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we contract with DBI Services to provide us with two springs in the amount of eighty-three thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Swales. Commissioner Swales has made the motion to approve the proposal for the roadside spraying. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foster has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion at this time? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the proposal to contract with DBI for eighty-three thousand two hundred fifty dollars for two applications of herbicide to the paved road shoulders, and this is, you said, spring and summer, signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign? Okay, motion will carry four to zero and that proposal for the herbicide spraying is approved. And I would note, we don't have to bid that out with DBI, correct? Because they're a state contract?
Yes, they're here doing state contract now in the county, state contracts.
Okay, all right.
And also, you know, for the county employees to do two rounds of spraying, it costs us sixty-seven. sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to do that actually, I'm sorry, for this service.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris. The next item on the agenda is the intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education for the old, for the leasing of the old Carnswell Elementary School Building. So at this time, Mr. Harris, we review that agreement one more time. We also discussed that at our work session last week.
The judicial system, Judge Mountain, they are willing to use the old Carnswell Elementary as a courtroom for grand jury, and has asked the county to, to education to lease this building, which they have agreed. There's not a rental on the building. We just agreed to pay for the superintendent of Frank County High School System as a.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Commissioners, do you have questions for Mr. Harris about this agreement? And this is for one year, and then we can renew it?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, if there's no more discussion, is there a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education?
I'll make the motion that we approve this intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has made a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education to lease the old Carnswell Elementary School Building. Is there a second to his motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Franklin has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education to lease the old Carnswell Elementary School Building, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry forward to zero and the intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education is approved. Alright, the next item on the agenda is the public safety pay analysis. Last week's work session, Mr. Harris proposed the need for a pay raise for certain employees of the EMS and the Sheriff's Department. And so, Mr. Harris, will you go over that? You provided us with some additional numbers.
Yes, as we spoke about last week, the public safety industry is in turmoil as far as finding employees. We have, we don't have, we don't have kids going into public safety like we did before. The ones that do are being hired by private, much larger wages than the counties are. So it's really cost us a, a serious issue of jailers, road deputies, everybody suffering as far as employees. I did some figures, which I presented last week, on what it would cost to deal. And I just broke it down into a dollar an hour raise to eighty-six thousand nine hundred seven thirty, uh, twenty-seven for combined EMS and SOE employees. And that is twenty-eight EMS employees and thirty-three Franklin County SOEs. The board asked me to complete a year analysis on it. And after going through it, I come up with, on the EMS side, for a dollar an hour raise for the same twenty-eight employees, it'll cost a hundred and one thousand eight hundred and nine dollars a dollar. And the Franklin County SOE employees, thirty-three employees who are, currently have a base pay rate, that cost is a hundred and thirty-eight, thirty-eight cents for cumulative and eighty dollars and more.
Alright, the cumulative cost, you, you mean for the entire fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay.
For both departments.
And the, oh, okay, okay, for both of, and that's an entire fiscal year cost. The earlier number you gave us was just for the end of the?
For the rest of this fiscal year.
And what, tell us that number again.
It was eighty-six, nine hundred seven and twenty-seven cents.
Okay, and that's for a dollar raise. Which EMS and, let's just clarify, which EMS employees and which law enforcement employees are we talking about?
The EMS employees are the twenty-eight employees that we have that work on the med units.
Med units, okay.
Yes, our paramedics and med units. The Franklin County SOE, Chief Deputy Lee Ford gave me these numbers, understanding it's gonna be the road deputies and who are on a hourly work wage, give me thirty-three employees.
Okay.
What was the total number again, for both of them? It was two forty?
Two hundred and forty thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and one cent.
So at a base level, that's where we would be when we start for next year's fiscal year budget. That's where we're gonna start at, but?
That's on the year analysis.
Right.
That would start.
And then for the end of this year, eighty-six thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. And that's both, that's EMS and law enforcement?
Yes, it's fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and nineteen cents for SOE Sheriff's Office, and twenty-nine thousand.
Okay. And that's a dollar per hour raise?
Yeah, one dollar per hour.
And what would that, what would that bring our starting, our start, so if we hired somebody, what would that bring our starting salaries up to?
For a paramedic, who's had three years of education, that would bring them up just?
Per hour. And that's what we'd sort them off. How about on the?
I can't exactly.
Sheriff, do you, what would that, and that may be an average, but what?
If you can not, if you can all now?
Okay. Currently, or if we do this raise?
If we do the raise.
Okay. Okay.
And that's on your baseline and present and, and?
So, so if we do this, when, when you propose this takes effect? I mean, I know we say the rest of this year, but when, what date are we looking at implementing this?
I would recommend the first day, second April.
So that would really be the second half of March is when it kicked in? Alright. Okay. And as far as, we talked about using CARES funds to, can you talk to us about that? What we have left, projects that are not funded?
Yeah, the spreadsheet that I gave, all the money, the spreadsheet shows that there is three hundred and twelve thousand four fifty-one seventy-one left of the CARES money. Now, that doesn't mean that all of, that's all of this actually paid out. But there's already some money allocated to, that's been voted on, that's been?
Out of that amount?
No, I, that, that, those funds here that have already been voted on are taken out of the total amount we have.
Okay.
So the three hundred and twelve, four fifty-one, seventy-one should be the amount that we have remaining.
So do you recommend that we use that to at least fund this for the rest of the fiscal year, or will we fund it some other way if we, if we implemented the dollar per hour raise?
I would recommend that, that we sit down, county manager and myself, and we can literally supplement that.
So if the board was in agreement, I mean, would we need to specify a funding source tonight, or how would we, I mean, would we?
I think, I think just giving the direction as Mr. Harris just outlined is.
Okay. Alright, commissioners, do you have questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Harris, do you have anything else before we? Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions for him about this? Okay. Well, at this time, is, is there a motion that we act on Mr. Harris's proposal? And we need to specify the amount per hour in the motion. We need to be pretty specific. The employees that we're talking about, EMS and law enforcement, and when it takes effect?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we give a dollar an hour raise to EMS and our law enforcement officers. That will take place the first day of April.
Or first, the pay, and it would actually be, it'd actually be the last, excuse me, of March, right? Because you pay after that, they've worked that time, correct?
Yes, the days, actual paydays will be the last of March, but it will be at the end of April.
Okay. And we need to specify, or which EMS and law enfor, we're talking about EMS that are on the med units and law enforcements, law enforcement, jailers and deputies?
Yes.
With inmate contact. Okay, so Commissioner Wester has made a motion that we provide a pay raise of one dollar per hour to EMS employees working on the med units, law enforcement officers whose jobs include inmate contact, to take effect with the first pay period in April, that, or the last part of March.
Yes.
Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Foster seconds the motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to provide a pay raise of one dollar per hour for EMS employees working med units, law enforcement officers whose jobs include inmate contact, deputies and jailers, to take effect with that first paycheck in April, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion will carry forward to zero and the raise of one dollar per hour is provided for the designated EMS and law enforcement employees to take effect with that first paycheck in April. Alright, the next item on the agenda is the accountant position. This is a proposal to authorize the creation of an accountant position for the county office. Our county office operates with a small number of core staff, and every year, our workload continues to grow. So if we added an accountant, that would help our staff improve our efficiency with regard to bookkeeping. And this position could also provide some needed backup in other departments when needed. So what I like to do is recommend the board that we create this position of accountant, that we authorize a starting salary of fifteen to twenty dollars per hour with minimum qualifications of either an associate's or bachelor's degree in accounting, and allow our new county manager to evaluate the need and hire this staff member. Mr. Harris, you've been our interim county manager now for about three months, so can you talk to us about the need for something like this?
Yeah, the, the general entry and bank reconciliations of the county clerk has been performing those duties also with him. So having a finance, financial advisor, accountant task.
Do you, do you feel like that starting salary is kind of commensurate with what surrounding counties, for instance, may be paying? We, we're thinking about it in terms of entry level.
Yeah, I mean?
But you can give us some advice about that.
The numbers that we pulled, even the twenty dollars an hour is gonna be, but what, financial, same population base, and, you know, twenty, twenty dollars an hour is fifty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars, six cents. And that's not actually paid, that's also taken on the basic insurance and retirement. So I, I don't know that that, I don't know that we, we might find a straight-out-of-school accountant for twenty dollars an hour, but we're not, yes, financial advisor.
What, what would you recommend? I mean, what would be a reasonable, at least, starting salary? We had taught them, we've taught numerous times about, there's been a discussion about if we would hire, you know, an assistant county manager who would do finance, or if we would hire a finance director. And I don't, I don't know. I thi, I think the consensus has been in the past, we're not quite ready for that step. But if we had another staff member who did have some training in that area, who could help share the load, spread the load in county office, that that would be helpful. Commissioners? Any thoughts?
On a, Bates County's financial officer is in-house, is seven one thousand five hundred dollars, that's what they made.
Alright.
Madison County is sixty thousand, is their?
Would, do they do any more than we're, than we will be asking of our person to do?
I can't actually. Mr. Turner, he pulled the number today off of, same thing, similar county makeups, population twenty-four thousand, Dawson County is twenty-five thousand. But?
Two accounts?
Yes, two accounts.
Okay.
And tho, those positions are in ti, tied. Then you have financial directors and?
Yeah, I, I think this is, the vision here would be somebody that's not a finance director, you know, that's a, that's a, that's an accountant who handles entering accounts, reconciling accounts, that sort of thing. So I think, I feel, I feel like that would be reasonable. But now, if you guys, Mr. Turner, do you think, there may be a way we can do this where we create the position and make the salary more flexible depending on who they, who he finds?
I, I mean, I would be in favor of letting them go ahead and receive applications, everything, and then discuss the pay with whoever we think maybe?
So, so negotiable salary?
Just to see, but I wouldn't, I mean, looking at, looking at what the, an actual accountant job title gets, I mean, they're way below what a finance director gets.
Exactly.
So I would look for an accountant, in my opinion.
Yeah, not a, not a finance director. The men, are, are you guys okay with, if we do this with a minimum qualifications? I mean, I think it needs to be, I, I don't want us to bring in somebody who we have to train. I, I feel like they need to be educated and know coming in how to, how to handle financial accounts, how to reconcile, how to do journal entries, especially, especially considering what their, their pay might be.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Any other, y'all have any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion then to hire an accountant, or authorize the creation of the position of accountant, and authorize our county manager to hire someone for this position, starting salary negotiable with a minimum qualifications of an associate's or bachelor's degree?
I'll make a motion that we hire an accountant for the purposes of assisting in the typical accounting duties that are, our county deals with, that this would be an entry-level position, that pay would be discussed with quality candidates, and we begin that as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Smells, Swales has made the motion that we create the position of accountant, and that we, this is an entry-level position, negotiable salary, minimum, minimum qualifications?
Yes, minimum qualifications.
Of?
Of being a?
Associate's or bachelor's degree in accounting?
Yes.
Okay, so associate or bachelor's degree in accounting. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Foster seconds the motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of this motion to create the position of accountant as an entry-level position in accounting, a negotiable salary, and minimum qualifications of bachelor's, or, I'm sorry, associate's or bachelor's degree, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion will carry forward to zero and that accountant position is authorized. Thank you, commissioners. Alright, the next item on the agenda is the airport authority update. I've been in touch with the Hart County Board of Commissioners about the RFPs they received. They held a meeting last, I believe, last Tuesday when we had our work session. They were also meeting. And they opened their bid, their bids in public. So I just wanted to kind of remind, right, kind of go over those. The first one was from Jaramillo Accounting Group, and this is from Albuquerque, New Mexico. And we asking the RFPs for a proposal for seven years, five years, and three years. So for their 2012 to 2018, and that's the seven year, they gave us a quote, our proposal, fifty thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. For the five-year, 2014 to 2018, their proposal was forty thousand six hundred and forty dollars. And then for the three-year audit, 2016 to 2018, thirty thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. The second one was Carr, Riggs, and Ingram. This is of Miramar Beach, Florida. And they provided for the five, for the, I'm sorry, for the seven-year, forty thousand dollars. For the five-year, thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And for the three-year, twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. And then the last proposal was HKA Global Incorporated of Atlanta, Georgia. And for the seven-year, they provided a quote of fifty thousand. For the five-year audit, forty-five thousand. And for the three-year audit, forty-two thousand. They also noted on their proposal that they would charge for out-of-pocket expenses, so travel, lodging, meals, overnight courier service. They would charge mileage at the current US government rate as well. The Hart County Board of Commissioners, they gave me two dates to choose to have a joint meeting. One of those was Thursday, March the 25th, or Monday, March the 29th. So I've kind of talked to everyone individually, and I think we have a consensus to meet on Thursday, March the 25th. Is everyone okay with that date? Is there any conflict with that date? This would be in Hartwell, and I believe, what, what's the name of that building? I don't know the address, but it's where we met before.
It's, it's the library.
The library, okay.
It's in the basement, though.
Okay, the basement. So the basement of the Hart County Library, and that would be on Thursday, March the 25th, 2021, at six o'clock PM. And that would be? 25th, 2021, at 6 o'clock PM, and that would be a, that would be a joint special call meeting to consider those RFPs for the airport audit. Does anybody have questions about that? Okay. And everybody, I think, has received copies of the bid, or the RFP, so if you have questions about those, you can ask Mr. Harris or Mr. Turner. All right, the next item on the agenda are committee appointments, and this is really just to update you, there are several committees and boards that we as commissioners take part in. So I'm the county representative for the Georgia Mountain Region Commission, and then I'm also a member of the local elected officials board, and that's by virtue of the position of chairman. And then I'm also the county representative for the Emergency Food and Shelter Board, and this is associated with ninth district opportunity. Commissioner Wester has been the ex officio member of the IBA for several years, and he would like to come off of that committee. I've agreed to serve as that, in that capacity, unless one of the other commissioners would like to take that. They meet once a month, what, Commissioner Wester, what's the date?
I think it's the second Monday of every month.
The second Monday?
They have, they have a meeting coming up on the 8th.
Okay.
And they meet, uh, meeting starts at 5:30.
5:30, and this will be once, once a month?
Once a month.
Okay. I'm fine with taking that, unless somebody else wants it, I'm fine.
I would like to serve on it, if, if it's available.
Okay, is any, any objections on? That's great, all right. So Commissioner Swales will be the ex officio member of the IBA, and he'll replace Commissioner Wester. And again, that's second, generally the second Monday, and the next meeting is March the 8th at 5:30, and I, I will let them know...
They'll, they'll send emails out.
Okay.
Ahead of time with the agenda and everything, and just a reminder, about the meeting.
Okay. The, the next one is the Board of Health. Our former chairman, Mr. Bridge, has served on the Board of Health, and I asked Commissioner Foster if he would fill that position, and he's agreed, so he can take the slot on the Board of Health. The, the rec board, Commissioner Wester, were you, were you on that? Were you ex officio for that at one time, or do we have some?
I still do.
Okay, and so you're fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so Commissioner Wester is the ex officio member of the rec board. Are there any other boards or committees that we need to be aware of, or that we need to fill a position as far as commissioners? None that I'm aware of? Any guys have other questions? Any objections to who serving on what? Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is the National Library Week proclamation. The Library Association, well, actually, this request was by Ms. Maggie West. Is Ms. West here? Okay, good. To that, they want us to designate the week of April the 4th through the 10th, 2021, as National Library Week. And so, Ms. West, if you'll come up and tell us about that, talk to us about that. If, if you want to, do you have a copy of the proclamation, you can read it to us? I'm sorry.
I have most of it memorized.
Oh, okay, well, great.
So, the Franklin County libraries include the Royston Public Library and the Levoni and in the year 2020, though it was very hard, we still provided programs online, we moved everything from in person to virtual. The Royston Library created a children's garden, and we're gonna teach children about homesteading, self sustainability, and teach, and passing on the knowledge of agriculture in our county. The Levoni Carnegie has recently received a grant to update our nonfiction materials for our children. And every year, there's a theme to the National Library Week, and this year is Welcome to the Library, which is very appropriate because we want everyone to remember that you are welcome back, we are open. It's kind of crazy hours right now, but we do want to welcome everyone to and back to the library. So from April 4th to April 10th, if you want to stop by and see what we got going on, we really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. West. All of you have a copy of the proclamation, so at this time is there a motion to approve the proclamation designating the week of April 4th through 10th as National Library Week?
Make a motion that we approve April the 4th through the 10th as National Library Week.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Swales. Is there a second to the motion?
I have a second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Franklin. All in fa, is there any further discussion before we vote? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to designate the week of April 4th through 10th, 2021, as National Library Week, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. And motion will carry four to zero, and the proclamation designating April 4th through 10th as National Library Week is approved. Ms. West would like for us to take a picture at the end of the meeting, so we're gonna go down and take a picture when we're finished. All right. All right, next item on the agenda is the county manager's report. So Mr. Turner, Mr. Harris, do you guys have anything to report to us tonight?
I would like to announce that Ryan Parks has been hired as the, he starts next week in April, he should be here, it'll be recognized.
Okay, good.
To announce that he's a new personnel.
And he starts next week?
Monday.
On Monday, okay.
The voters' moral has took a, a standstill because of all the weather. It's just so wet up there, we can't set a bench yet, or do any more work to drive it out, so, but that is still in progress. Also, the auditors were in, in, still couldn't promise that we were gonna make it to March 3rd. And tonight's my last meeting, and I just want to thank you for your support that you give us all in.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is announcements. I spoke, commissioners, I spoke recently with Mark Hazel of GMRC, remember he came and led the discussion at our retreat this fall. He would like to come to, tentatively come to our work session in March to discuss the updates to our service delivery strategy. If y'all remember, we came up with goals, so we need to have those ready, if he's able to come. He's not yet confirmed that 100%, but we're planning on him being there unless something comes up that he can't come, he feels like he'll be able to make it. So, and I'll, I'll let you know if I hear from him one way or the other. But that's the March the 30th work session. As everybody is aware, Pilgrims has applied for a zoning change request for property on Highway 320, as well as a conditional use permit to construct and operate a poultry rendering plant, which would produce meal for use in the manufacture of pet foods. These items are gonna be discussed at the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which will be held at 5 o'clock PM on Thursday, March the 18th, here, 2021, here at the Justice Center. This meeting is open to the public, and members of the public will be allowed to speak, correct? Okay. This meeting will also be streamed on the Zoom platform, but that will be for viewing only. The way Zoom is set up, we won't be able to take comments from someone in the public who's watching by Zoom, but that at least will expand our access. Members of the Board of Commissioners may attend this meeting by Zoom. We will not participate in the meeting itself, but because the commissioners may be present, even virtually, the county will notify the press and post an announcement on the county website to that effect, so that everybody understands, even though the commissioners may not be here physically, we may or may not be participating by Zoom, at least indirectly. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on this and any other planning and zoning items that are, that are coming up that month, on Monday, April the 5th, 2021, starting at 5 o'clock PM at the Franklin County High School Auditorium. This meeting will also, of course, be open to the public. Members of the public will have the opportunity to speak either for or against the, the request, and it's not just Pilgrims, there may be other requests too. This meeting will also be streamed by, on, live by Zoom. Again, members of the public will not be able to comment through Zoom, that will be viewing only, but that's another option. Commissioners will take action on those planning and zoning items at the regular board meeting that follows the public hearing on April the 5th. So like tonight, we'll have the hearing, we will stay as long as people want to speak. There's a five minute time limit, each person can speak once, but we'll allow everyone who wishes to speak, time to speak at that hearing, and then we'll, when the hearing is concluded, we will move on to the regular board meeting, and that is when the board would actually make a decision on all of the zoning requests, including Pilgrims. The board is gonna meet tentatively, as we said before, Thursday, March the 25th, and, did I get that date right? It's March 25th. That certainly didn't look right. In Hart County at 6:00 PM for, to consider the RFPs for the Airport Authority Audit. We'll also have a work session on Tuesday, March the 30th, 2021, that following week, and that's our regular work session. Needless to say, we have had a lot going on in the county in the past couple of months, from searching for, and appointing a new county manager, the annual audit, dealing with planning and zoning issues, as well as day to day operations. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of our county employees. On behalf of the board, we appreciate each one of you, we know there's been a lot going on, and there, really, there's no way the county could survive without you coming to work every day and doing your job, and everyone has pitched in, and they've carried on no matter what new issue of the day arose, so we thank you for that. Commissioner Wester, do you have any announcements?
Just thank you to Mr. Harris for the good job that he's had as interim county manager, and a big welcome to Mr. Turner on his first day being with us.
Okay, Mr. Swales?
I echo welcoming our new county manager, and also thanks to Terry, thank you for helping us cross the finish line on this pay adjustment that needed to be made, and, you know, we wanna, we wanna bring in the best and the brightest, and we want to keep the best and the brightest here in Franklin County, so hopefully this helps in doing that. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Swales, Commissioner Foster.
I echo what these guys said, thank you, Terry, for doing all you did, and welcome Mr. Turner, and thank you to our employees for all you do.
Okay.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
Thanks to the library system, my girls are so blessed by the Royston Library and what they do, and what y'all are able to put together on a tight budget. And so us recognizing you for April 4th through the 10th is just a very small token of what I feel in my heart for the library system here in Franklin County.
I echo that. I used to walk to, I always lived close to the Levoni Carnegie Library, and I used to walk up there every day, almost every day during summer. I love the smell of those books. Mr. Franklin?
Appreciate it, my little Terry Harris, having been throughout the county this, this month, and also the county, when the weather gets to where they can work the county roads, and it dries up a little bit, they can, they'll do some working on them, because you can't do anything with a motor grader, and it raining in potholes, and, and so, you know, give us a little chance, we'll get it straightened out when it dries up a little bit, and we'll take care of that. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Franklin. At this time, if there's nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester makes a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin, seconds, the motion, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero, and we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, and just remind the commissioners, we need to sign some paperwork, and we need to go down and take a picture. Thank you, everyone.